I think the, yeah, it's gonna be the, before they can send items.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm just making sure. Okay.
Okay.
Think, are we, you have ready thirty?
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Uh, the first plan of action, we're gonna start with, uh, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we're now, we're gonna move to the election of chairman and vice chairman.
All right, somebody, how do we wanna do this one, gentlemen?
You have a choice. The top of the agenda has a list of the members.
Okay.
Maybe I'll select who I like and agree on any one person.
An alternate. No, thank you. Yes, let me.
So we just have?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to anything.
I'm not opposed to anything either.
I don't have a preference either, I mean.
Why don't you, why don't you make a, who, who are your, who are your thoughts? Chair, vice chair?
Who's? The first is vice chair, why don't you move to chair?
That's, sounds like a pretty good succession plan.
Move you to vice chair.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Who do we want to?
I'll remain an alternate.
That'll work.
That'll work. So we have it in the motion? Who makes the motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion, let's make, uh, her other, Gerardo Arizate as our chairman, I move for a vice chair to chairman. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, objections? Motion carries.
Vice chair, who wants to take that one? I'll move to nominate Tim Harry as vice chair.
Thanks, you're the best.
Hey, you just agreed. Heard it on the record, they got this face recorded.
Okay, there's a motion on the table with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? Motion carries.
I'm not allowed to object to my own, right?
No kidding. All right, uh, now we're moving to the consent items. We, I need a motion to approve the meeting, uh, the meetings for November the second.
Say, I'll move to accept the minutes as presented. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, objections? Motion carries. All right, we move to the first case, case number two zero two three dash zero one V. Consider the approval of the request of Alfredo Caldera owner for a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash five of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow structure carport to be built at thirteen feet front yard setback instead of required twenty-five front yard setback in single family three S F dash three zoning district lot six block one Rogers Edition twelve zero three West Twenty-Sixth Street.
Thank you, good morning. Twenty-eight notices were sent, zero were returned, two approved and two protests. The property involved in this request is located at twelve oh three West Twenty-Sixth Street. The site is currently zoned single family three and is occupied by a single family residence. The property is surrounded by residential development to the north, east, south and west. The applicant is Alfredo Caldera owner and the purpose of the request is for a variance to allow a structure carport to be built thirteen feet instead of the twenty-five feet front yard setback in order to allow the structure twelve feet forward on the twenty-five feet front yard setback. The applicant is requesting a variance from section fourteen, fourteen seven five of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance and, uh, the following criteria is outlined in the zoning ordinance fourteen dash fifteen, uh, dash five are to be used by the board of, I'm sorry, fourteen dash fifteen one D three are to be used by the board of adjustment in evaluating the variance requests. The burden of proof in each meeting of these criteria is upon the applicant. Authorized in specific cases, a variance of the board shall find that the variance request is not contrary to the public interest. Special conditions exist for the applicant do not generally exist for others. Illiteral enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. Staff, staff analysis of this request is the applicant's request to reduce the front yard to thirteen feet instead of the twenty-five feet front yard setback will not create any hazards or hardships to surrounding properties to light air or space. Low traffic volume in this residential street should not be hindered. With this in mind, the planning staff has no objections to this request as presented. Do you have any questions for staff?
What were the objections from, from neighbors?
There was, uh, no objections, there was zero, there were two approvals, actually.
Two approvals, okay, I thought you said that there were two, two objections to that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Twenty-eight sent zero return, two approvals and zero protests and I have the...
Do we have anybody, um, on Mr. Caldera to speak on his behalf?
Would you like to speak on his behalf? No?
Now we open this meeting to the public. Anybody wants to speak for or against it? All right, we close this part of the meeting now. It's open to us.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve this one.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Objections? Motion carries. Moving on to case number twenty, twenty twenty-three dash zero two dash V. Consider the approval of the request of Debra Bishop owner for a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash five of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow structure carport to be built at nine feet front yard setback instead of the required twenty-five feet front yard setback in a s- single family estate S F dash E zoning district lot thirty block one North County Club Estates three hundred Lane, Lance Wood Lane.
I've got a quick question here and this is just looking over, looking over this, but on our docket, on the public hearing, it says fourteen dash seven five and when we look at the, uh, when we look at the case number here, it says fourteen dash seven dash six.
Okay, fourteen dash seven, it's fourteen dash seven five.
Fourteen seven five, okay. Just wanted to make sure we properly notated that where we needed to.
Give me just a second. Yes, fourteen dash seven five.
Okay.
The property involved in this request is located at thirty-three hundred Lance Wood Lane. The site is currently zoned single family estates and is occupied by single family residents. The property is surrounded by residential development to the north, east, south and west, northeast and south and university land to the west. Fourteen notices were sent, one was returned, two approvals and zero protests. The applicant is Deborah Bishop owner and the purpose of the request is for a variance to allow covered entryway to be built sixteen feet instead of the twenty-five feet front yard setback in order to allow the structure nine feet forward on the twenty-five feet front yard setback. The applicant is requesting a variance from section fourteen dash, that is fourteen dash seven five of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance. The following criteria is outlined in zoning ordinance are to be used by the board of adjustment in evaluating variance requests. The burden of proof in meeting each of these criteria is upon the applicant. And I do apologize, it is fourteen dash seven six, see, I did, uh, look at the front, special front yard regulations. Yeah, this one has special regulations because it's in a different zoning, it's, uh, special, uh, single family estates. So the section is fourteen seven sixty, special front yard regulations where a building line has been established by platter ordinance and such line requires a front yard setback greater or lesser in depth than is prescribed by the ordinance for the district in which the building line is located. The required front yard shall comply with the minimum required front yard is established by section fourteen seven dash five. The reason it has this special front reg, front yard, uh, regulations, it's to establish in the... In the plant that it is twenty-five feet. Uh, normally, single family estates currently are thirty-five feet, but the plot does say twenty-five feet for this location. The following criteria is outlined in zoning ordinance are to be used by the so, uh, board of adjustment in evaluating variance request. The burden proof meeting each of these criteria is upon the applicant. The variance request is not contrary to the public interest, special conditions exist for the applicant that do not generally exist for others. A literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is absurd and substantial justice is done. Staff analysis of this request is the applicant's request of sixteen feet front yard setback will not create any hazards or hardships to surrounding properties to light air, open space. With this in mind, the planning staff has no objections to this request as presented. I do have some photos of the location. Uh, she has a very big front yard. Her property is twenty-five feet from the property line, uh, however, there's additional, um, like, right away, up, uh, since this is in the cul-de-sac, it doesn't really have much of area for traffic in that area, in that location. And I'm here for any questions.
Questions?
Do we have? Objections to this, or?
There was no objections, there was two approvals.
Do you have some folk in the?
Hold on, any other questions to the city? Do we have, uh, anybody speak on behalf of Ms. Deborah Bishop?
You open a public hearing.
Open the, to a public hearing. Ms. Deborah Bishop?
Yes, sir.
You wanna step up? Or, okay, that's fine. Do you wanna let us know what's going on, or?
Well, as you can see in the picture, uh, the, the front of the house, there's a recess to the front door and it's probably six foot, seven foot deep. And I've got two big trees in the front and there's a five step down lead into the driveway. And, uh, one is not safe for me to walk up and down. So we, we wanted to move the front door out and then at the front door, that's where we wanted to put the little cupboard. Walkway. Another seven, eight foot, uh, from the front door, so when someone comes to the house currently, there's a metal door and then there's the wood door and it's got big metal squares and soon as I open the door, someone can just reach right through and, and grab me. It's very slick the way everything is set up right now. We have lots of cats in the neighborhood and I love cats, but they bring their birds and they eat them in that little cubby hole and there's, you know, ants and just... Plus, I think it's gonna enhance the front of the house, like you said, um, the two-story at the, at the very end and, you know, have pretty much of the... Right now, my house looks like it's just a big brick wall and so we're trying to not only secure it for me, more safety for me, for people coming through that make the front appearance look a whole lot better.
All right.
Yeah, any questions?
Anyone else wanna speak? All right, come on.
Would you please state your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Dwayne Dobbs and this is my wife, Gail, and we live on the north side, thirty-three oh one Lance Wood Lane. And, uh, we're here to, to object to this. We don't feel like, like it's right and, uh, uh, we just wanna voice our opinion. We just think there's some issues there and in the event that we ever try to sell our house, this, this could be a problem, so.
Well, it depends on the materials that she plans on using also to build her carport. Because, uh, when we look at our front door, we will be looking right at this carport.
If I be, uh, I can do that, uh, it's not a carport, it's only an entryway.
Into the, okay, so we understood by the drawing that it was gonna have gates, is it gonna have gates?
When you turn in our circle driveway, there'll be a metal decorative gate there with a button to push and probably si- six or seven foot on that gate to my front door. The outside is going to be, uh, stucco finish, it's gonna have a nice single roof to match the same pitch. Not, of course, as high, but just right over the cover side, the stucco. So, uh, we plan to do more landscaping in the front of the house. And so, no, it's not post in the ground and, and metal and tacky looking, I, you know, it's not gonna deface anyone's property, I wouldn't do that.
Do we have any kind of, I guess, drawing or, or conceptual or anything along those lines of what it's gonna look like?
There is a drawing, you just didn't understand the drawing.
It is not very, it's not the commonest of beautiful, it's only as a walkway for her, as, and she has indicated that it's only for security reasons.
He wants to get it? We don't have that.
So this is another one that she has submitted, uh, the reason for having this, the sides closed in with, you know, the stucco and all. The elements, the, the leaves, the slippery surface. There's five steps, like I said, to get into my, they're all of her sizes and we're going to, um, you know, prove, make it all one level so that I don't have to step up and down, 'cause I have fell up them, I fell down them, so, um...
So, is the, is the main reason for this for security or is the main reason for access?
The main reason is for security.
Okay. Can we look at the other picture?
Yes.
The, if, the image of the, in front of the house. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm home a lot. And I need, and I need to find, and then it's time by myself. And so, like I said, like the existing metal door that's up there right now in that sunken area. You can stick your hand through there, there's a deadbolt lock on it. But you can stick your hand through that opening and unlock that deadbolt. And in with, I opened the door, there's only two or three inches difference from where the metal one is. Anybody could reach through, grab me, shoot me, whatever, so that's, that additional distance.
Are you gonna enclose all the way up to the second, is it two-story, all the way to the second story?
Yes, or when, when we moved, uh, right now, we want to move the front door out to the front of the house.
Okay. So that wall right there that's, um, has that hole, that is still in within the setback. So she's planning to enclose that and build the second story. So the, that's within, that's still, okay, she's still in the setback one. Uh, the other portion, which is the, the nine feet, that is what she's extending out and this is for the variance, this is for, uh, for that wall, for that enclosed wall.
'Cause that's what I was curious about, she doesn't need our approval to build the gate or level the ground or...
She needs your approval for that nine foot, um, what's going on.
Just for the awning or whatever's gonna be built.
So, if she has a lot of space, why can it not be the twenty-five feet, which is required by the law, rather than nine feet? I don't understand why she can't, because it's a long way, it's a long driveway. Why could it not be the required twenty-five feet?
The, the city ordinance, it's a dirty twenty-five foot side yard setback that you cannot build on. She's only asking nine feet of those twenty-five.
So how far from the street will it be?
It will be about, um, it's thirty-five.
It looks like it'd be about thirty feet.
Thirty feet, yeah.
Yeah, it looked like it'd be about thirty feet.
So we understood by the letter that it was gonna be nine feet from the street.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
I, I think it's just extending to the end of the, where her circle drive is, is where it would go. And it looks like based on the sketch, we'd still be about thirty feet from the street.
Yes, actually, thirty feet is right away.
Do you see where the?
Okay, this sketch says asphalt.
Do you see where the circle comes around at the bottom there?
So that's the street.
Sounds like she wants to build a cover there, so when you pull up, you can walk in.
Right.
Right, you're walking in a covered walkway to this new front entrance that's gonna be enclosed here.
So it doesn't look like it's gonna come much past, um, it doesn't look like it's gonna come much past where the sidewalk is, correct?
It's not gonna come.
It's, it's right, we're actually gonna be taking out probably three, three to four foot, we're cutting, bless her heart, the people that did that, had built that house loved concrete, there's concrete everywhere. And we're gonna, there's, there's a poignant side on, on that side, on the wider side. If I were to fall, I'd split my head wide open on that. So all that's gonna be cut back and Ms. Maria, the, we estimate it nine foot, it's not gonna be more than nine foot. It may end up and only be seven foot or six foot, you know?
Her estimation, when she presented this to me, you see those, uh, guard, uh, guards?
The papers?
Papers, so she had indicated that it's the length that they were gonna be, uh, to.
Yeah, all announced to me because back.
Okay.
Uh, it's not gonna come out any, it's gonna be less than what's seen out right there, man. It's for, it's the big concrete.
So what about the gates? Are, are, are there gonna be big gates?
Gates, we've got no control over. That's what I wanted to make sure of, that.
Yeah, we have.
All, all we're approving would be whatever the.
The structure side of it.
So it's just at the end of the sidewalk, is that right?
Correct.
Not out in the asphalt, is that correct?
Correct.
Oh, no, I'm not going up to no asphalt, no. It's thirty-five feet, I think, from the front of my house to that asphalt.
Do y'all still have an objection, or?
I have no objection to her, uh, making it safe for her.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Anybody else wanna speak for or against?
All right, we got one more.
Yeah, I'm Tim, bomb thirty-three oh four Lance Wood.
Okay.
Uh, the covenants and restrictions, North Country Club Estates plainly state the setbacks. And it also says there's no garage doors to be facing the street, this property here is plainly has one that's out of the covenants. And so it says twenty-five feet and that's what the deed restriction says and the covenants say.
I mean, are we, do we have a garage door that's going in, I, I mean?
Well, in the previous bill, they have a garage that faces the street on a, that, that's a, apparently that's grandfathered now because that violated the covenants early on.
I mean...
There was an existing shop that has a overhead door, but I didn't do that.
The covenant says there's no garage doors to be facing the streets, North Country Club Estates. This has been, this is already pre-existing, of course, you moved there. But I stand with the covenants, the way they state, they're that way for a reason and it's twenty-five foot setback, among other things, if you read the covenants and restrictions.
We also have a thirty-foot easement as well in addition to the twenty-five foot setback, correct? Okay.
The presentation should be.
Is this gonna be a, but this is a permanent structure that is not consistent with the covenants and restrictions from North Country of the States, is that correct?
The zoning, the zoning for this location does indicate that there's twenty-five foot, it's a right yard setback and it was established by the plot. The variance is also in the zoning ordinance, which allows for, for the public to present, a citizen, resident, uh, resident, to present a request for a variance. This is what Mrs. Bishop is doing today.
No, I totally understand that, but I stand with the restrictions of the subdivision that was planted and zoned there.
You're objecting to?
I object to it and I don't, it, they had one variance already that violated the structure, you know, the covenants and restrictions and it's apparently grandfathered now and so I stand with the restrictions of the subdivision as they state.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wants to speak for or against? All right, I close this, uh, portion of the meeting.
All right.
Members?
Well, um...
Do you have a motion? Where my numbers went, but I move to approve case number two zero two three dash zero two dash B.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a, uh, motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Case number two zero two three dash zero three dash V. Open the public hearing to consider approval of the request of Betty Hawkins, owner of variance from section fourteen dash seven dash thirteen B of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a structure carport to be located at one and one half feet from the main residence instead of six feet separation from the main structure in a general residence GR zoning district lot eight block one Jerkins Annex twenty-four, twenty-two, one-four Cummings Drive.
Thank you. The, there were seventeen notices sent, two returned, zero approvals and zero protests. The property involved in the request is located two fourteen Cummings Drive. The site is currently zoned general resident and residence and is occupied by single family residential. The property is surrounded by residential development to the north, east, south and west. The applicant is Betty Hawkins, owner, and the purpose of the request is for a variance to allow carport structure to be located within one and a half feet from the main residence instead of the six foot separation from the main structure. The applicant is requesting a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash thirteen B of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance, which states, uh, accessory building and structure regulations, the site yard, there shall be a site yard for any attached accessory building equal to the minimum requirement of the main structure located in a residential area. For a detached accessory building located behind the front yard of the building setback, there shall be no site yard required, provided that all building codes and standards are met. Accessory buildings must maintain a six foot separation from any other structure. If the six foot separation is not maintained, the accessory building shall be considered to be an integral part of that structure and shall be required to, to observe the same site yard as the main structure. Adjacent to Site Street, the accessory building should observe either the planted setback line, the setback line established by the main structure or the setback lines established by ordinance, whichever is the most restrictive. And let me add that on this, uh, in this presentation or this case, uh, the carport is within the setback. The, uh, purpose of the request is because it is, it's not separated six feet from the main structure, which is, which is a requirement by the zoning ordinance. It's only has a one and a half foot separation. I'll continue. The following criteria is outlined in the zoning ordinance are to be used by the Board of Adjustment evaluating variance requests. The burden of proof and needing each of these criteria is upon, upon the applicant. The variance request is not contrary to the public interest. Special conditions exist for the applicant that do not generally exist for others. A literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. The staff analysis of this request is the applicant's request of one and a half feet separation from the main structure will not create any hazards or hardships surrounding properties to light air or open space. With this in mind, the planning staff has no objections to this request as presented. I have any questions for staff?
Any questions?
Can we make them replant the tree they're gonna have to cut down? Kidding, kidding.
And actually, she's, this, this case, um, she's already had the carport placed there. Uh, she did request it to be placed in a certain location according to building inspection requirements. The company that sold her the carport did not pay attention to that, so they moved it one and a half feet close to the, to the main residence, which the general requirement for accessory buildings has to be six feet.
So the carport's already there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this is an existing one, it's just installed too close to it.
Yes, and she did request, she did obtain a building permit for it. She did try calling back the company that placed it there to have it moved and they didn't.
So she did everything she was supposed to?
She, she did everything she was supposed to, yes, sir.
All right. We'll open this part of the meeting to public. Anybody to speak for or against? Okay, we close this part of the meeting. I have questions, Prieto. Do the residents, do they need to be present? Because I know in the past, they had to be present for this.
Yes, we did notify them. They receive a letter, uh, let, letting them know the times and dates. I did speak to Ms. Hawkins and let her know when the date of the presentation was. She said she would be here, I'm not sure. She's an elderly lady, so I'm not sure, uh, she remembered the date.
Because, uh, I mean, I think moving forward, they have, because I know in the past, we would table the hearing for whoever the owners didn't show up.
Okay.
But-
We can do that if you please.
Considering that it's already there, I don't have a problem.
If it's already there, why do we have to do anything?
That, yeah, that's, that's another-
Because it wasn't built six foot away from the house as per code.
So, so she'd, she'd asked the people to build it the way that they're supposed to and they, they set it in the wrong place?
They set it the wrong place. She tried, she called them back, but they did not, uh, listen to her. Uh, she, her statement to me was that they were very rude when they were called back to, uh, readjust that carport.
Oh, fun.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Case number two zero two three dash zero four dash V. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of Tony E. and Deborah E. Aguero, owner of the variance section fourteen dash seven dash five of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a structured carport auto cover to be fort, to be built fourteen, uh, foot instead of the required twenty-five foot yard building setback in a single-family two SF dash two zoning district lot three, block seventy-two Crescent Park addition there following seventeen oh two Red Bud Avenue.
Thank you. There were seventeen notices sent, zero returned, four approvals and zero protests. The property involved in this request is located at seventeen oh two Red Bud Avenue. The site is currently zoned single-family two and is occupied by single-family residence. The property is surrounded by residential development to the north, south and west, and multifamily development to the east. The applicant is Tony E. and Deborah E. Aguero, owners, and the purpose of the request is for a variance to allow a structured carport to be located fourteen feet instead of the required twenty-five feet front yard setback. In order to allow the structure eleven feet forward of the twenty-five feet front yard setback, the applicants are requesting a variance from that, from section fourteen dash seven dash five of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance. This is for, uh, section for front yards. In the following zoning district, the minimum required front yard shall be in accordance with the following schedule and no building or structure shall hereafter be located, erected or altered as to have a similar or smaller front yard than hereafter required. And no front yard existing at the time of passage of this ordinance shall be reduced below the minimum set forth in the following schedule, except hereafter provided. Following criteria is, as outlined in the zoning ordinance, is to be used by the Board of Adjustment evaluating various requests. The burden of proof in each meeting of these criteria is upon the applicant. The variance request is not contrary to the public interest. Special conditions exist for the applicant that do not generally exist for others. A literal enforcement of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The spirit of the zoning ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. The carport has already been built without a permit and there's no documentation or inspections that provide proof of being built to development standards. Staff analysis of this request is the applicant's request to reduce the front yard to eleven feet instead of the required twenty-five feet front yard setback will not create any hazards or hardships surrounding the properties to light air or open space. Should the board choose to approve this request, the planning staff will recommend adoption of following conditions. The carport shall not be enclosed in the future. No other structures or additions may be placed within the twenty-five foot front yard setback. No other structures or additions shall be placed on the property without any first contacting the building inspections department and obtaining a building permit. I'm here for any questions.
So I'm understanding that, uh, so they did not get a permit to build the carport to begin with?
No, sir.
Has that been rectified and inspected? Where, where are we at with this?
They have not had any inspections, the, they have not obtained the building permit.
So are they gonna have to take that back down and build it back again?
Well, uh, it is up to the board to decide what the procedure is. The conditions here is, or what, what y'all decide, what the outcome is. It, it is, uh, up to you to either have them obtain the building permit and have, uh, go through inspections once again. Or leave as is and continue with the building permit and, or removal.
Any more questions to, to the city, to staff?
What have we done in the past with this? What's been the, what's been the procedure? What is, what have they, what have they done?
In the past, it has been left to be standing and obtained, they were, uh, required to obtain building permits and go through inspections, um, through the process of inspections. Whether, uh, whatever building inspections requires, uh, for them to review or, or go for the inspections, because I see that there's, they need footing there, an inspection for footing, I'm sure. I really don't know what the process is for building inspections as far as inspecting.
Okay. So in the past, we have, we have typically approved those pending inspections and-
With the conditions.
With the conditions. They have been approved with conditions.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions to staff? Okay, at this time, I open the meeting to the public. Anybody want to speak for or against?
It's actually my home.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
I just want to let y'all know, we've built it to protect our vehicles. When we moved there, the garage was already enclosed into a dining room, so that was not something that we did. Um, we bought the house because at the time, that's all we could afford. So not, I know you're saying, well, why didn't you buy one with a garage? Well, this is what we could afford at the time with five children. Okay, so, um, anyway, um, in case y'all haven't noticed, the weather around here is not kind to your vehicles and that's why we chose to build this. Um, we did ask neighbors around us and we did ask if, if, others that have built down the street from us and they said, oh, we didn't have to get a permit, so we, you know, we went by what everybody else said. Because we do have quite a few down, all, all the block, all the way up to University. Anyway, um, again, the weather, the, the, the snow, the, especially the high heat, you know, are affecting our other vehicles and so we, we needed a carport. So we leave it to you. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, I close this section of the meeting. Any discussion, board members, motions?
I'm making the motion with the conditions, but I do think that we do need to go back through the inspection process. And so make sure that we're inspected with the footings and the rest, everything else that, that needs to, that needs to hit that, but...
There's a motion from Tim, uh, with conditions, also with the inspection from the city, so it could be put up back to code. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. Okay, uh, fellow board members, do you agree that homeowners should attend these hearings? Is it on, is it part of the policy or?
Yes, it is part of the policy. It is placed, uh, on the public, as a public notice and in the newspaper as well. Uh, we do, like I said, we do send, uh, the, the, the members, or I'm sorry, the, the owners a letter letting them know when the, um, case will be presented, time, date and location.
So at least one homeowner, one of the owners-
Homeowner or representative. I know we've had representatives before as well.
Yes, we have representatives before.
Okay.
Should.
Yes, sir. And so we, what we will do is we'll strive to go ahead, go ahead and contact them the day before to make sure that they attend.
Yeah, because if they don't attend, we have to table it, because if we have questions, we can't ask the behind why this was done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we adjourn with consent.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Let's go home.
Let's go home. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.